I make a motion, may I have a second?
Second. Did you make a motion?
I made a motion, I'll take your second.
Okay. That's all we got?
You can have the second, please.
All right, I'll go to the next one.
Okay, all in favor of I, passes unanimously.
I don't know whether you want to take any comment on it.
No, I mean, I just, I would like to say thank you to Carl for being such a wonderful steward of his property. I know it's been in your family for a long time. It's 140 acres. You could by right put up close to 30 houses. And you're generously, you know, creating a nice community there and putting a lot of it into conservation, which is the goal of our comp plan, so I want to say thank you.
Carl, too, but it's nice to hear it.
No, I personally, as a steward of the town, I appreciate it, you know. It's very generous of you to put so much into conservation and be so thoughtful with the plan.
So the next decision, if you direct me to do so, I will prepare for your next meeting a resolution approving the open development area. If we could just have a vote on directing me to do that.
I'll make a motion to direct Warren to prepare the ODA.
Approval.
Approval for the Alderkill subdivision. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
I'll have it for you for the next.
Thanks, Warren. Okay, thanks for coming in, guys. We'll see you at the next meeting, I guess, in mid-November. I just want to announce that I've delivered my budget to the Town Board and now we're working on it. Our next workshop meeting will be Tuesday, October 17th, at 1:00 PM in Town Hall. Everyone's welcome. Everything is, will be, the preliminary budget is on our website. My supervisor's letter is on the website. And any changes, I'm sorry? Oh, thank you. Any changes and will be noted on the website as well. I can enumerate them, or you can look at the budget and there are copies available in Town Hall should anyone want it. Also, I'd like to, I think we have this later in the meeting, scheduling a public hearing, but we will be having a public hearing for the budget. I will ask for it to be scheduled that Wednesday, the 25th of October, at 4:00 PM. 4:00 PM, because we have very little evening time available here in Town Hall, especially with early voting. So we want to fit it in before the deadline, get it passed. It's a good budget, it uses a lot of fund balance. And our funds for one-time capital projects and infrastructure projects, but we'll come back to that. And there is early voting at Town Hall beginning on the 28th of October. It's about 10 days of early voting, but you can go to the Board of Election, Dutchess County Board of Election website to see all the dates and times, and come and vote early and晚. Lastly, our Conservation Advisory Board desperately needs members. Any OIC there, we could use you, if you want to come onto the CAV Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Board of Assessment Review, all have vacancies and we're looking for volunteers. Hillside Fire Preliminary Budget Public Hearing will be held on the 17th of October, 7:00 PM, at the Firehouse. And the Rhine Cliff Fire Preliminary Budget Hearing will be held on the 17th at 7:00 PM at the Firehouse. And the budget and the notice is available here in the Town of Rhinebeck. Hold it, we're doing that here, I'm sorry, on our website. Thank you. Okay, Workforce Outage Lead Agency, Seeker, Warren, take it away.
Okay. Which should happen, is that two? This is great that you have it organized. So the other resolution that I prepared for you tonight is Resolution 2023-223. And this is a resolution declaring the Town of Rhinebeck Town Board Lead Agency for the purposes of coordinating, conducting a coordinated review pursuant to the State of Garden Health Quality Review Act, known as Seeker, for the application of Community Development Group LLC for a proposed 80-unit multifamily affordable housing project, including all buildings and associated infrastructure pursuant to Article 5, Section 125-6424, and Article 12, Section 125-29 of the Town of Rhinebeck Code, on a 23-acre parcel of land located at Rhine Cliff Road, the Town of Rhinebeck, Dutchess County, New York. And I indicated the tax parcel number. As we all know, this is an application by the Community Realty Group for an 80-multi-family affordable housing project, including all buildings and infrastructure pursuant to our code. We classified this project as a Type 1 action under Seeker at our meeting on August 14th, 2023. We then duly served notice of the project and the intent to act as lead agency on the following, all of the involved agencies which I've listed in the resolution. And within the time period, which is 30 days following the sending of that notice, each of the above involved agencies either provided their consent for the Rhinebeck Town Board for its functional lead agency status for the proposed solar development. Oop, hold on, it's not a solar development, it's a, the proposed development project, take the word out, solar. Or failed to respond to send notice within 30 days of the date of the letter. So unfortunately, or fortunately, I don't know. We had thought maybe the planning board, we were hoping the planning board would assume the agency, and they will not. So that the burden is, has to be assumed by the Town Board. And we, when you pass this resolution, we will then have to work on the process for moving forward with the Seeker review. It probably will require at least one special workshop meeting that we can go over.
I know there are changes I want to ask for, things I'd like to see. So there are changes to the plan, and I know that the public has expressed a lot of concern, and there are certain things that I'd like to see. With the tree study, I'd like them to enumerate every tree that they're going to take down. I'd like to see if we can make it smaller. I want to revisit the plans and the site plan. I met with village trustee Slavy and John Clark of their planning board and their comprehensive plan head. And again, the request was made that Ken Carney sit down with John Clark in the village to look at the layout of this in conjunction with all the space around it. And I think that, you know, I know that we had talked about it briefly, but I think that that's not an unwise thing to ask, that the developers sit down with the village and go through their concerns for the layout in consideration of Will's Manor and possible future projects that the village may be doing on village land and budding this.
Yeah, certainly, the village is an important involved agency in this process. And they should be included. We'll do our best to include the planning board in that process, but we will have a fair amount of work cut out for the Town Board.
All right, well, thank you. Anything to?
All we need with that change, taking out the word solar.
All right, may I have a motion to, that's Alan's? I need a second for Workforce Outage Lead, thank you, Chauncey. Any concerns, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously, thank you. So you will, should we schedule this for a?
I think, you're involved in the budget process, so I think we should talk internally.
Our first meeting?
And then decide internally when we're going to have the first meeting. I think, I'm not guaranteeing anything, but I'm assuming we will have public input on the environmental aspect of the project in addition to the project itself.
Okay, so, I mean, we could potentially schedule it for our first meeting in November, which is in mid-November.
Yeah.
And we could have an attorney-client before then to talk about what the board members would like to see and go from there.
That's fine.
Okay, great, thanks, Warren. Just the Central Hudson easement, do you need to?
Oh, yeah, Central, which one of that three?
You know what, Tab 3, I can do this. Central Hudson came to us, called me up. We have 73 acres of land on Stone Church Road, and this is along Stone Church and Yance with the telephone line, with the electric line going through the middle of the 77 acres. They want us to relocate it to Yance Road and Stone Church Road. It's land that the town owns in the town of Redhook. And we think it's a good idea to get it out of the woods and onto the right-of-way of the road for ease of maintenance and less, we agree. And there's no alienation of parkland, and so Warren has drawn this up. So that's what we're doing here. So I'd like a motion to approve rescinding the Central Hudson easement for the moving of the power line from inside the interior of a 77-acre parcel of woods to along.
Just to add that, is it subject to a permissive referendum?
Yes, thank you.
Because we are.
Thank you, Chauncey, may I have a second? It's just you guys tonight.
Makes it easier. And it's a Type 2 action under Seeker, so it doesn't require a problem.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I guess we have to wait 30 days for a permissive referendum notice, Joan, before we send this to Central Hudson. If you can just let our Central Hudson contact know that it was passed and we need the 30-day permissive referendum. Thanks. Now the big one, here's our noise ordinance, Tag 4. We've been going around and around with this. I still think that the decibel readings are wonky. I know that Brian Tam, our zoning administrator, thinks that the decibel rumbles are wonky. Warren, do you want to speak to this, or do you have any recommendations for us?
I mean, a little bit, I sent an email to everyone earlier, just today, though.
Yeah, I read it late before.
Okay, you want me to go?
That'd be great.
What?
Yeah. This is Brian Tam, our town zoning administrator.
Just after quickly reading it, you know, the 65-decibel leaf blower thing? That's starting a leaf blower, not using it. So you just ban leaf blowers? I mean, that's a little handheld $10 leaf blower.
What do you recommend we do with this law?
I don't know, I don't think it's, I mean, to me, it's almost, you know, similar to a construction activity. Even though I haven't found that in anyone else's, you know, his, his values codes. But, you know, eliminating that, does that mean every landscaping area in town is out of business? Because it's got to be five decibels.
It's not our intention to ban leaf blowers.
But it is at 68 or 65 decibels.
Well, at 50 feet?
Yeah. I did it with the police right here in the parking lot.
Okay.
Brought a bunch of different leaf blowers that are quieter than most pushmowers. And so a push mower would also be illegally used on a Sunday. A lawn mower, chainsaw, anything would be illegally used on Sundays, because they all date violations of 5 decibels of both background notes. Still, I really think you could be able to think about how to do it. And I don't mind if you don't want me to do it, I'll do it on my own time and leave it to the police and do decibel levels.
What do you mean on your own time? This is like a function of your job.
Because it's kind of important to me, you know.
Well, I mean, no one, you don't work for free here, which is.
But I'm saying, I don't, you know, I don't mind testing, going around and testing landscapers and, you know. And there should, I don't think taking that decibel away is terrible, it just needs to be higher, because there's plenty of, you know, guys with 20-year-old lawnmowers with no muffler on it, and it's, you know.
So what DV level would you recommend?
I mean, I did the standard steel, the big one that every contractor has. And I think it's, I wrote an email, it's like 82 at full throttle at 50 dB. And that's loud.
I mean, the rest of the law talks about people objecting to the noise, which is a subjective criteria, which is what the village had. So what we did was we sort of combined what the village did with what we used to have. Because what the current law has is a decibel limitation, which is, which is kind of vague, whereas, so anyway. I could go either way. I mean, I think, I think, I spoke to the mayor about it, and he thought that the way they were enforcing it was reasonable and it handled people's concern. I'd be interested to hear what anybody here has to say.
You know, the thing is this, we don't have full-time enforcement. We have 12 days a year with the village police, 12 days, 12 shifts a month with the police. More if we need it and when their staffing levels come back to normal, but certainly not more than 17 or 18. 17 or 18 shifts a month maximum for all of patrol. Brian is here for 20 hours a week and has a ton of work to do. He is not going to go out and enforce noise laws. And, you know, this has been problematic from the beginning for me, so I don't have an answer.
Look, I do have a recommendation outside, like that of Ryan, but if four guys show up to a yard the size of this, that's a lot, that's excessive noise, just one guy, you know, like, you know. Although four guys is only going to take.
It'll take 10 minutes.
Half an hour, yeah, whatever, so that's hard to say. But I've seen that, or another, another issue about it, is that limited to size of property and how many people to be working on at a time using, it's terrible. That's something. That's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
We just read, Jim, Jimmy Rhodes wrote an email today, too, and he said, "We just wanted to provide a quick reminder that there are decibel limits in the code today, and the regulation amendments proposed didn't change most of those. We know that they're unenforced, that's why we're doing this. The effort started as a way to more specifically regulate lawn equipment noise due to very specific complaints received, and we tried to be very selective in revisions made to focus on this single issue. Sounds like we need to look at the entire noise ordinance and potentially do a wholesale revision. That would require, I would think, more testing and consideration of the differences in potential noise complaints in the hamlet versus other parts of the town with larger, less, larger lots slash less deaths residential development, or making the noise ordinance much more general, like what Brian provided below from pine plains. As we had discussed in the past, this really comes down to enforcement and managing expectations of the public on what can realistically, reasonably be done to handle noise complaints. I still believe that the tool exists in the current code, even if the DV levels are too low. A leaf blower used occasionally to clean a property could, would, likely be considered normal operation, and I don't know that any tickets would be given for such use. I would think despite the CD, DV levels, whereas a leaf blower used for hours a day is excessive, and this is where the law would come into play."
So I have no chance, I'm sorry, I have no next chance to review Jim's email. I saw it come in this afternoon, and I've been talking to Brian. I do think we should, I mean, the major change that we made to the law was to put a provision there on unreasonable noise, which will in most cases be the exception of the law that would be enforced. I do think we should have some backup decibel limits, because there may be certain problems that need to be resolved through the decibel limits in the local law. Let me see if I can resolve this with Jim and with Brian and come up with a solution. Obviously, I want to use the word selective enforcement, but you enforce the law with, you know, some common sense. And we're not going to apply the law to people who are not making unreasonable noise.
The state police and the county police do not enforce the code.
No, we understand.
So we have 12 shifts a month when the village police could go, and Brian would have to work with them to make sure they're trained in our law. Often, this isn't slander, it's just, there are sniggly little pieces of our code that they may not know. You know, I don't know until I look it up or we're confronted with something, like the do-it-yourself burial this summer.
Yeah.
You know.
I'm sorry, what you want to have, though, is something that could be utilized in an appropriate case by our code enforcement officer. Or if necessary, the police can enforce the law. Most cases like this are resolved with a simple warning to the property owner, you know, you're in violation of the noise law and it appears. I'd rather not take out all of the decibel limits, let me see what Jim has to say.
All right, thanks.
Would there be an ability to do it like in the Rhine Cliff overlay, like a separate? Because I look, like, Timberly and Reddick have separate code.
We absolutely could.
It's the same wording, but.
We could. Yes, we could do, our law won't be discriminatory if we do it by zoning areas. And it's a historic hamlet overlay, which has no zoning by right anyway.
The way it's arranged right now, though, you measure it at the property line, so a small lot.
That's not what he's asking, though. He's asking if we can make a law specific for hamlet.
No, I understand. But, you know, in a 500-acre lot, somebody who's 100 feet from the property line, it's going to be a much lower noise level.
I mean, I got a complaint from an estate, and it was an apartment building that butted up to the state, so whenever the people came near the back, you know, the back of the, they got calls. And I don't know what, you know, what can they do? I mean, he's five feet away from them.
Well, that, yeah, that is way more than 80 dB.
Yeah.
Let's see if we can work it out. I'll work on that with Brian and Jim, see if we can come up with something.
Okay. Rudy, I know you're here, but we're not ready to talk about it. I know this is. Okay, thanks.
Do you need me for anything else?
No, let me just see, we're good with grant. No, I don't, I don't, no, you know, but while you're here, I do want to mention two things. I got a bunch of complaints this weekend about a marathon that was held in the village and town. And I forwarded them to Brian, and there's, you know, 1,000, 1,500 runners on rural roads.
Yeah, I didn't get anything.
With no permit. You didn't get it?
No.
Later this afternoon, later this, late this afternoon, I wrote to you.
Oh, well, I left it, too.
I copied you, yeah, I know, so it was later. I copied you on two emails and said that you'd have to weigh in as to whether or not we have an event code that allows this, and if we don't, we should consider writing one, because we're getting more and more events here where people are using our roads, and we need to know and we need to approve it or disallow it. Like, I don't necessarily think that an event a week is a great thing for a lot of neighborhoods.
Yeah, I think we do have a provision in the code.
Yeah, that has to be permitted.
You could look at it and just get back to us. The second thing is that.
Great, nice question.
I'm just going to say, from the village's point of view, we also received a lot of complaints. And I think the village is coming to the conclusion that an event of this size is too big for our village to handle, because we have similar complaints, and we do an event code.
We didn't even know about it.
Right, right, so, but I think this, you know, for the future, we, at the village level, because we do have an event application process, we're going to look unfavorably.
Did they not take, did they pull a permit out with you?
Yes. And the situation is that the event has just grown and grown and grown over the years.
I mean, we've got porches, we have cindercuffs, we have something every week.
We have, well, we do have that application, but in this case, especially with the store, to the roads, we received a lot of complaints as well. And the feeling is that, you know, when it was 500 runners, it was okay, but it turned into 1,000.
And this is going to get bigger, yeah.
So, yeah, so at the village court level.
And people couldn't get to their houses for like hours.
At the village court level, we are, will be looking unfavorably upon events of this magnitude.
Okay, thanks.
Well, plus, it went way into the town. It came by my house, which is two miles.
Morton Road and Mill Road.
We only, obviously, for our region, 50.
Well, Mill is a county, is Mill a county road there?
Uh, yeah.
Don't you have one on Thanksgiving, the turkey, is there a turkey truck?
Yeah. Well, and Mill Road is a town road or a county road?
Well, Morton, where Morton comes into Mill, south, is county road.
So from Morton and Mill to 9 is a town road?
No, because it stops at the, at the bridge. The county road ends in Mill Road.
So which portion is town, from Route 9 to the bridge?
From Route 9 to the bridge and from Morton to 9 to the north.
No, that changes back, you mean through Rhine Cliff, that changes back and forth a couple of times.
Well, from the, where the memorial is in Rhine Cliff to down Morton Road.
Is town.
No, that's, that's county road 85. And county, when county road 85 gets to Mill Road, it turns south. That part of Mill Road is county road 85.
So we may have to work with the county on this to say that county roads within the town need permitting as well.
Yeah, well, if they went through, if they came down Rhine Cliff Road, they were on some of our roads.
Well, part of it is along in the hamlet, but not leading into the hamlet. But, I mean, we should, you know, because then that means it could be Primrose Hill, or what. We should work with Bob Lockton on this, I think.
Well, we have to coordinate the permitting process, even if it's mostly in the village, because there's a liability aspect, too.
People are really upset. They literally couldn't get, they were stopped from getting to, out of their home or into their homes, so. Okay, that, and I think we're done, Warren, thank you.
Okay. Next one.
Rick Lewitt, trustee Rick Lewitt from our favorite municipality across the street is here to make a very brief presentation on a historic bike path and a potential project for the town and village. Thanks, Rudy, so we're trying.
Take it, Elizabeth. I'm here to preview a request that I'm going to be making this board later in the month.
Thanks, Warren.
Basically, back in 2007, this board, in conjunction with the Town of Redhook and the Linky Land Trust, established two block hike trails that run through the village, the town, and into Redhook. That was about 16 years ago, 17 years ago. Right now, the Hudson River Valley Greenway has grant opportunities to do some rehabilitation of the trail. And also, they have a stated goal of connecting village centers to the Empire State Trail, which intersects us at River Road and 199. So the grant itself is a 50/50 match between the municipalities and Greenway. And that match can be done both in cash and with in-kind work, which is important to the grant. So this is a good opportunity. Steve Rosenberg and I actually went out, surveyed the entire reeds, counted the signs, to see what they're missing, the damage sign, damage signs. We developed a plan to replace the missing damage signs and to create two displays for maps, which would visit the whole area, one of which would be located at the junction of River Road and 199, which is where the Empire State Trail is, and the other one would be in the municipal lot of Rhinebeck Village, making that a note. The plan requires the cooperation of the village of Rhinebeck, the town of Rhinebeck, and the town of Redhook. So what Steve and I did is we looked and I did a calculation. It turns about on the ratio of 2 to 2 to 1. Town, village, Redhook is the distribution of signage. So the entire grant is a $40,000 grant, of which 20 would have to be met by the municipalities. I did some calculations about what the labor rate would be and such, and it turns out that the village of Redhook, I said, excuse me, the village of Rhinebeck would contribute $6,000. The town of Rhinebeck would contribute $6,000, and the town of Redhook would contribute $3,000. And that would basically be for the working capital to put up signs.
That's only 15, that's not half of the 12.
Well, the rest, the same time labor.
Okay.
So I, so I, you know, I spoke to Bobby Ryan about it, with the rates, the rates you guys have to reimburse, so I've done some calculations in terms of what's necessary. So I will be coming back to the board to allocate for a request of $6,000 for a grant to the administration of the village of Rhinebeck. I know that if the project hasn't already passed it, they are enthusiastic. The village of Rhinebeck made the allocation last night of $6,000.
I think it's a great idea.
And, yeah, so we'd like to move forward. The goal would be get the signs we have over there, and then the town, the crews would go out and.
Well, I mean, we're in support, you know, we need help reviving our path from Amtrak to the village, too.
And I would suggest, and just one question for you, if you want, the grant does include things like designating, if you want to make a designation then, to the Rhine Cliff water pump. If you want to do something like that, there is a provision for that kind of signage.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So that's up to you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you, I'll be back.
No, doesn't go through the cemetery.
It goes up Mill Road.
Not the cemetery, Mill Road.
It goes, no, it goes along Mill Road, because it does that loop, or it's a no. Thank you.
But you'll be back.
I'll be back.
We're in the middle of our budget, so, I mean, are you got, you know, this is part-town funds, it's in our comp plan. We can add it to the budget, yeah?
I'll be back, yeah. And the tricky part, of course, is I have a grant deadline that we made third, so I'm in the resolution.
Oh, work with Joan, we, we have a budget workshop, and we'll have a public hearing at which we could do business. So as long as you can make one of those, or we could do it instead, we're happy to get it done.
I'll make it my business, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks, good to see you.
Good to see you.
All right. All right, I guess we're, thanks, Brian, for coming and working on, you know, and, yeah, I guess do some more testing on your time here.
I'll settle it with you.
There you go. May I have a motion for twenty twenty-three to twenty-six, the grant is contract renewal?
Motion. Second.
Any questions or concerns?
That's what we've been doing, right?
Yeah, this is what we've been doing. It's just information we have on all the short-term rentals going on in the town, and they are increasing, and I suggest that we start the process up again, you know, that we put to rest before COVID or during COVID to regulate short-term rentals in town. So I'm going to sort of move that forward, I think, in November. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. May I have a motion for twenty twenty-three to twenty-seven, deferred compensation?
Motion.
Thanks, Troncy. This is just a vehicle for employees to put away and to pension any pre-tax income at no cost to the town. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. May I have a motion for twenty twenty-three to twenty-eight, Marshall and Sterling Employee Benefits Agreement?
Motion.
Thanks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion for twenty twenty-three to twenty-nine, health insurance renewal?
Motion.
Thanks.
Second.
Any questions? I guess it went up about eight percent this year. Any questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion for twenty twenty-three to thirty, the highway department to solicit their twenty twenty-four material bids?
Motion.
Thanks, Alan.
Second.
Thanks, Tronc. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? Passes unanimously. Twenty twenty-three to thirty-one, create a capital project for the cemetery vault repairs. May I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Alan, thanks, Tronc, I'll take you as a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, passes unanimously, thank you. Assessor to attend the New York State Association of Assessors Fall in Conference, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Alan, Tronc, thanks. This is only a very partial payment, since she's the full-time assessor at Kipsey, we're covering meals and a teeny bit of the evening time, and it's well worth, and she continues to become more and more educated and one of the, you know, best assessors in the state, fortunately. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion for twenty twenty-three to thirty-three, electric vehicle charging station service contract?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan.
Second.
Thanks, Tronc. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. I will make a motion for our preliminary accounts payable abstracts of twenty twenty-three to thirty-four. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. I will make a motion for twenty twenty-three to thirty-five for our capital projects abstracts. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tronc. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Tronc?
All right, excuse me.
It's okay, you can take your time, I won't push you. No, Troncy.
I understand, it's a deep thought.
Oh, passes unanimously, and I will make a motion for twenty twenty-three to thirty-six for our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Any questions for? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. We received a five thousand dollar grant from Nicerda for our clean energy community for reaching our bronze. Yes, we finally did it, we're a bronze climate smart community, we have a five thousand dollar grant, this is a resolution for us to accept the grant and to use it to pay our environmental coordinator when we get through C. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Troncy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'd like a motion, if this works for you guys, for twenty twenty-three to thirty-eight and twenty twenty-three to thirty-nine, for the special town board meeting on the seventeenth as a budget workshop here. I'm sorry, Joan, this is confusing. The special meeting on the seventeenth is a budget workshop, and the meeting on ten twenty-five is a public hearing, correct?
It's a town board special meeting. And then the next resolution is for the town board on the public hearing.
Yes, but there's no date on the agenda for that, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the
No date for what?
My agenda here says twenty twenty-three to thirty-eight, schedule special meeting ten seventeen and budget workshop ten twenty-eight.
Ten twenty-five.
Twenty-five. But what we want to do is schedule a workshop for ten seventeen and a budget public hearing.
First, you need to schedule the special meeting.
Okay, so this is correct. Two twenty-three to thirty-eight, schedule a special town board meeting for both the seventeenth and the twenty-fifth of October.
Correct.
Seventeenth is at, give me a second, one P M. And the twenty-fifth is at four P M, again, because we do not have evenings available before the election with early voting here in town hall and court and whatever else is going on. So the public is invited to vote. Does that work for you? Okay, and then, in addition, twenty twenty-three to thirty-nine would be our public hearing, which would be scheduled, again, to reiterate, the twenty-fifth of October at four P M. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any, I'm sorry, I need a motion.
Motion.
Thanks, Alan, I need a second, thanks for what I just said. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Joanie, you weren't here in the beginning, so the approval of prior minutes was motioned by Troncy and seconded by Alan and passed unanimously.
Got it, thank you.
What is the date? I got the seventeenth, I got the twenty-fifth.
That's the twenty-fifth as well, that's why it was confusing. This is both
This one, in other words.
This is both a special meeting and a workshop, so you can take this out, anyone we have a one P M and a four P M.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. That's what I got confused, so it wasn't just me. All right, that's okay. I also wanted to say I was not at the last meeting, I was recovering, and very sad to see that Josh is stepping down, he will be missed greatly. He is a great board member, steward of the town, and this is a demanding job, Josh put a lot of time into it, he has a demanding business, a young family, and he's pulled in a lot of directions. We will be looking for, to appoint someone in the new year to fill out his term, and we'll see what happens in the election, and I'm assuming that whoever wins the election will appoint to the remaining two months of his term, and then together as a new board, appoint in January, unless we decide not to, but if anyone's interested in serving on the town board, please contact the clerk. Josh, thank you, and you'll be missed, I'll miss you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He was also the deputy supervisor.
Yes, he also, everyone's been the deputy supervisor, it's like, I'm the deputy supervisor killer here. I thought, you know, maybe he'd want to be supervisor someday, but it's a lot.
We're getting back by then, who knows?
Yeah, who knows? Any new business before the town board? Any discussion items or public comment on any non-agenda items? Nine of Lynch, come on up.
Nine of Lynch, one question, four. And we here to ask about the bocce court.
We are not funding it.
And why?
We have had no number from the two residents who say they want it, and there's been no fundraising. We've spent three million dollars on the park recently, we need to take our time to grow into what we've built, we need to develop rep programs, and we will have to go back and look at a new master plan. We're not funding, we don't even know how much it costs, nobody's done any work, we don't have a plan, and we don't have a number.
Okay.
I mean, we did ask you to get that, we haven't seen anything, or we asked, who's the woman who's been asking? We don't even know if we need a bocce court, we don't know who plays, there's been no study done.
Eighty people.
Right, eighty people who say they do, but do they want their taxes to go up? Do they want maintenance for it? Like, where does it go? There's a whole process. People just can't say we want something and have it immediately, and there has to be work to be done to make sure that it's going to serve
Our understanding from Josh was that he was going to draw up the plans and give us, so he's dropping off.
Josh is, is, has to pay attention to his business and his family instead of now, so I don't think we have
Okay, we'll be back.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, we've spent three million dollars on the park, we need to, this budget is not really funding anything else other than getting this skate park done and some furniture and maybe some planting and more gravel. We need time to grow into what we've done, we need to look at what we promised we would do, do we need another baseball field, do we not need another baseball field? What are we going to do with the facilities on Stone Church? Do we still need them, do we not need them? You know, people say they want something, and there's a lot of work that has to go in to make sure that it's really needed and that it's a good use of our tax dollars. I don't know if we're talking twenty thousand or two hundred and twenty thousand, so I don't know. Look forward to hearing more, but it's not in this budget. We will, we are hiring, our rep director is full-time, and she will be working with maintenance department, coming up with a schedule of maintaining all of our new facilities and expanding our rep programs, and I really think we need a pause and a look, and if people want a two hundred thousand dollar bocce court, just like the soccer community did
Ten thousand.
Oh, I have no idea, I mean, it sounded like a lot of money with a ninety by thirteen, I don't know, it's a public works, it's prevailing, we don't have a plan, so we don't know. Where is it going to go? Master plan has to be changed, you know, it's the work that has to be done, that we